Would you please all remain standing for a moment of silence for those in our military who continue to fight for our freedom and those who have lost their lives in doing so? Welcome to the July 13th Board Meeting. Just a note, we had talked about in the workshop setting the dates for the August meeting. Initially, we had said in the workshop, for those of you who were there, that we were going to do it on July 29th with the workshop. That has changed due to Clifford Theater utilizing the stage with their sets. We're going to be unable to do that as we need the microphones for the machine that tapes for us for Kathy to be able to type the minutes. So therefore, we've decided to have it on August 24th. So the Village Workshop will be on July 29th. The Board Meeting will be on August 24th. Just to let you know a little bit ahead of time, the September Meeting, Board Meeting, would have been scheduled. It falls on Labor Day. So we will be pushing that back a week to probably September 14th as well. So they will be spread out a little bit. So I think that works out a lot better and we do not have to worry about the space being taken by Clifford Theater. So again, Workshop, July 29th, 7:00. Board Meeting, August 24th at 7:30. Okay, first on the agenda is the Fire Department. Chief John Salmon.
Good evening, Mayor, Village Board. Just two items tonight. We have two new members with the Suffolk Fire Department, Brendan Kastenov and Catherine Benarski.
Is that on, John? I don't think that's on.
Just do not touch.
Are you hearing it back there?
We'll hear it.
I know, but can everyone else hear it?
It's rigged in a way. We have two new members for the Suffolk Fire Department, Brendan Kastenov and Catherine Benarski.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
And also, the Fire Department was looking into and would like to request permission with the Village Board to move forward with looking into hosting the Rockland County Volunteer Fireman's Parade for September 14th, 2019.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to accept the, to have the parade.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Culture and Recreation, Kathy Mills.
I have to try to stand back. Good evening, everybody. A few updates that we have. The pool is open and it's been going very well this season. Just speaking, I'm sorry.
Can you go closer maybe?
Yeah, maybe get a little closer to it.
Everybody, Elaine and Bruce, it seems like no one can hear.
Our team can hear you without distortion.
Kathy, can you just lift it a little?
I'm going to touch you.
That's it.
It's not even...
It's not on.
There it is. Go ahead, go.
All right.
Talk close and loud.
I can only go so far.
Talk on the side of it.
Just don't hit yourself in the eye with your ear that's there.
Good evening, everyone. A few things, we have, the pool is open this summer. It's been going very well. It's open until Labor Day of 2015. We have a few summer concerts this season. We have one this Thursday, July 16th. Reflections will be performing at 7:00 PM. That's the big band. It's a beautiful concert for those of you that would like to come out. The next summer concert is Kirk Gallagher. That's the children's concert and that will be Monday, July 27th. And then the last concert for the year is Carnaby Street. They'll be on Thursday, August 6th, again at 7:00 PM. All concerts are rain or shine, so if the concert, if the weather looks poor, we'll be going inside to the community center. And then back up a little bit to the top, Farmer's Market is on every Saturday between 8:30 and 1:00. We have Clifford Theater, as the mayor had mentioned. We're going to be having that on Friday, July 31st and the performance will be at 7:00 PM. And then August 1st, which is the Saturday, we'll have performances at 2:00 and at 7:00. We have two kids pool parties coming up. We've got one on July 20th and one on August 4th. And then the Street Fair going into September, we have the Street Fair will be Sunday, September 20th. That's the Chamber of Commerce. And then Suffering Day, we have a huge day planned for that, will be Saturday, September 26th. We will have activities and fireworks and we'll be working closely with the chief and Dan McInerney, who's also a huge help as always with Suffering Day. And we have activities planned for Saturday, September 26th.
Thank you, Kathy. And I want to take the opportunity to thank you once again for the outstanding job. I don't know if there's anyone in the room that attended the family day over at the pool on Sunday, but it was an outstanding event. I spent some time with the families down there. They had a wonderful time. The pool is now warm, so everyone was very, very happy. Thank you to the DPW, Charles Sawicki, and the Water Department for getting the leak fixed so the pool is warm. Please come down. And thank you again to Chief Clark Osborne, Virginia Menschner for manning the hot dogs and the whole entire Recreation Board, lifeguards. It just was a really fantastic day and thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Kathy.
Grant writer, Fred Rella.
Good evening, Board. I have two items for tonight. The first one being that I have written the final report to the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation and Historical Development, preservation actually, for $3,000 for the Clifford Theater. So that check should be coming very shortly, within the next 10 days hopefully. The second item is that the Community Development Block Grant Awards were announced for Rockland County. There were 29 awards which were handed out to varying municipalities, not-for-profits and varying organizations that helped the community. The awards ranged from $8,000 up to $100,000. And there were three $100,000 awards. The Village of Suffolk was one of the municipalities that received the $100,000. We were awarded it for sidewalks to be put in along Orange Avenue from Oliver Street down to the point and will be done in conjunction with the repaving of Orange Avenue this year.
Thank you, Fred. That's great. Thank you so much. Okay, Village Attorney.
Thank you. First of all, as we discussed, the Building Department has requested that we set a public hearing on an amendment to the housing law dealing with the amount of space, generally with the amount of space required for occupancy of rooms. So I think you might want to set a hearing for the October 24th, August 24th meeting. We're getting everything pushed back. We're getting there.
We haven't a meeting yet, okay?
No, we haven't. On August 24th. Somebody want to set a motion for a public hearing?
Motion.
7:30, 7:40. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Okay. And then the other thing we discussed in the workshop meeting in connection with both the purchase of the VFW building and the financing, I've provided to the Board an environmental assessment form and a negative declaration under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, essentially finding that because there will be no intensification of the use, that it will not have a negative impact on the environment.
Do I have a motion to adopt the negative declaration?
Just for the record, Mayor, I'm not participating in this vote, as I haven't previously because of our firm's representation of the VFW.
I will motion it. Do I have a second?
What is the motion for?
Okay. Moving along. Building Department. Steve Connolly is here. I asked him to come down. Steve is here to talk about the electrical contractors that was, you were, had asked the Board to approve. The Board has some questions for you. Mr. Markounis, Mr. Morris, you have some questions?
Yes, my concerns were just to, do you have any background information on this inspection? On the electrical inspectors, have they worked in the area? Can you elaborate a little more on their qualifications?
On the current applicant, no. I don't know who they are. They just contacted us to ask if the Village would consider putting them on and that's a board decision, but they have to be credentialed by the county before they can be licensed to do the inspecting.
Right.
So they check on all their qualifications, the different classes and levels of expertise they have to have. It's a master, it's a commercial, it's a one-family residential, all that, all these different qualifications.
And they have all these qualifications?
I haven't seen it on this particular deal.
You haven't seen it?
No. They called and asked, they said they had everything. I said, well, before the Village can approve it, you're going to have to be licensed by the county.
Right.
So I have not seen anything yet back from them, so I'm assuming that they are licensed by the county or they wouldn't probably even be proceeding.
So would you advise us to see that documentation from the county before we?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So we'll table that? Agreed?
I haven't seen anything on that, so we can try.
Right, it would be helpful for us to have that information from the county indicating that they're fully qualified to work and be inspectors in the village.
Because we do have a list that comes from the county.
Right.
Licensed electrical inspectors that we go by.
Okay. Okay, so I would make, well, is there any other further discussion?
Can you just maybe just for maybe the public's benefit, kind of explain what the role of the inspectors are in relation to your department? What function do they?
Okay, they actually perform all the electrical inspections. We do not. We are not credentialed to do electrical inspections. We've had no classes on it, nothing. So what they will do is they'll come in and do a roughing inspection, which would be the first part when the rough wiring is put in and everything is run. And then once the job is completed, they'll come back and do a final inspection, which, you know, the fixtures have to be in, the switches, the outlets, the wiring all has to be connected. And then they will issue an electrical underwriter certificate that we have to have in the file before we can issue a certificate of occupancy.
And the cost of that inspection is borne by the homeowner or the person who's doing the work?
By the homeowner, it's the electrician, right?
And also, we should explain that they, they're asking to go on the list of people that we use. They wouldn't be the sole electrical inspector for the village. They're asking to go onto a list that we would use to call in the electrical inspectors as we need them. So it wouldn't be as though the Village is exclusively using them. There is many of them on the list and the Village can choose whoever they'd like to do the inspection for that particular project.
That's correct.
And does the Village actually choose the inspector?
No.
No? You give a list of people that are available and?
Correct. Right, most of the electrical contractors know who the inspectors are and they can just, you know, want them where they want them, as long as they are licensed by the county and the Village has approved them to be active as electrical inspectors for the Village.
Okay. I don't see why we couldn't, I mean, subject to confirmation that they in fact have been appropriately vetted by the county and licensed, I would make a motion to approve, subject to that confirmation. I don't see why we'd have to, obviously if they don't have the credentials as reviewed by the Village Attorney, then they're not going to go on the list. That's just my suggestion.
Do I have a second?
Second. Yeah, I would second.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Markounis?
Yes.
Mr. Byrne?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion is carried.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Police Department, Chief Clark Osborne.
Thank you, Mayor and Board. Some items to vote on and some informational items. We just spoke about the items we voted on at executive set over at the workshop. And the first one I would like to recommend is we have a part-time police officer opening. We're anticipating it in the next few weeks. This is just a replacement, not a new officer, and we're looking to hire John Roberts as a part-time police officer. That will be pending as all of our hires, clearance from Rockland County Department of Personnel. John just recently retired from the Town of Ramapo Police.
And that would also be subject to Leila's vacating position?
Correct, yes, correct. Which should be coming very, very soon.
Right.
And at the same rate of pay?
Correct, that's correct, yes.
I make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Markounis?
Yes.
Mr. Byrne?
Yes.
Thank you. And I vote yes, motion is carried.
Thank you, Mayor and Board. Second item is we're requesting that Detective, or Detective Mike Fantasy be assigned as a group supervisor of the Rockland County Narcotics Task Force. I gave you the details in exec, in, keep saying exec, in the workshop. And I asked her to be assigned there for a period of one year, starting July 14th, 2015, for a period of one year.
Do I have a motion?
Well, before we make the motion, just maybe you could elaborate for the residents on what Mike's role will be in the narcotics task force and how it will benefit the Village.
Of course, yeah, of course.
Thank you.
The narcotics task force is a countywide agency, does narcotics enforcement, drug sales, drug distribution. Detective Fantasy will be in charge of a team of officers with one of the primary responsibilities of his team. One of his primary responsibilities will be the Village of Suffolk. So it'll benefit the, and Mayor and Board and the residents, it will benefit all of us by having an active narcotics investigator with a team of officers to address any issues that we have or will have within the next year.
That sounds great.
And Chief, Detective Fantasy has worked with the task force many times over the years, correct?
Has.
It's not a new assignment for him?
That's correct. Detective Fantasy has been there two prior states. I think the last one was 2012, I believe. And obviously he's been out a couple of years and it's good to send him back every few years to clean things up a little bit.
Okay, I have a motion and a second.
And authorize the mayor to sign the agreement?
The agreement. Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Markounis?
Yes.
Mr. Byrne?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion is carried.
Thank you, Mayor and Board. The last two will be public hearings. One will be to approve two stop signs on Rockland Terrace, one facing south at the intersection of Lincoln Street, one facing north. I will get the dimensions to Terry. This has been an ongoing problem. In that development, I'm speaking to the residents and meeting with them on a few occasions, one of them being this weekend. Very legitimate complaint, when you come out of Lincoln Street, it is a little bit difficult to navigate the ways and get out safely if there are vehicles parked on the side of the street on Rockland Terrace. So we think this is a safety measure which is needed. A lot of kids on that street. And as we spoke about in the workshop, this road has become a cut through down to the state line by South Street. So we ask for a public hearing for next month, or next meeting.
Okay, so we would need a motion for a public hearing to approve the two stop signs?
On August 24th?
On August 24th, 7:45.
Motion?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. We would now need a public hearing for?
The next one will be, and I apologize, not on the agenda. We were just trying to figure it out today. One of the issues we continue to get complaints on is Washington Ave at the intersection of Boulevard. There are no parking signs at certain spots on each corner. I'm going to suggest that we pull them back a little bit. I do not have the exact measurements, but I will have them tomorrow. I will go down there, we'll take a look and I will get them to Terry for the public hearing as well. I just think for safety, if anybody, and I think most of us go down that way, but if you don't, just go down and watch the traffic a little bit. A lot of traffic comes up Boulevard, up to Washington, and it always is a lockup down there because of the parking situation.
You're talking about then space on both roads?
Yeah.
You're talking about Boulevard and Washington?
Matt, exactly, Matt. I'm just trying to figure out the best way and where to pull them back. I just want to assess it another day to figure out exactly which will be the best way to do it.
Yep, I have it on you.
This is based on resident complaints as well.
I'd make the motion for the public hearing, subject to the information to be supplied.
And we could do it at 7:45. We could do all of these at 7:45, but we just need to public, I mean, do them separately. So Matt's motioning for 7:45 on the 24th. And Frank is seconding. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Thank you, Mayor and Board, just some informational items. We actually had a very busy month over the last month at the Police Department. We've actually been very busy. One of the things?
Excuse me, Clark, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Can we just do the handicap spot as well? There was a handicap?
Chestnut Street.
Yeah, you know what, that was the problem. Please explain to me again. I'll take care of that. What do you need?
Well, it was moved. We just need to do the public hearing on it. So we're going to actually put that into the 7:45 public hearing and do all three of them at the same time.
Would you like me, obviously we didn't put, would you like me to help out with the dimensions?
Joe Hunt, I think, is here. He's going to get all the information.
We'll take care of it tomorrow, Joe.
Joe, you'll get all the information to Terry so we can also?
We'll take care of it tomorrow, Joe.
So I need a motion for that as well.
Make a motion.
7:45 on the 24th. I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. I'm sorry, Clark. Go ahead.
No, Mayor, it's no problem. That's legit, we need to take care of that. Joe, I'll do that, we'll take care of that tomorrow. One of the things this Board approved that I want to thank you is you approved our use of Narcan. Narcan is a nasal injection spray that is used for overdose cases, for opioids, heroin, for some different narcotics. We haven't used it since we were certified that we carry it in our medical bags and we actually had to use it three times since last Sunday here in the Village. All three lives were brought back, all three of the people were treated at the hospital. One of them came, 19-year-old Ramsey, teenager, came stop by to see me to thank the officers for all they did to get him back on track. Hopefully they're going to get the help they need to live a productive lives away from what their overdose issue brought them. And I just want to let you know that. I want to thank you because it did work. We've never used it before and it worked three times in one week time, so.
That's great.
So I thank you, you guys did a good job. Thank you. We also add, and I really want to thank you guys because hopefully we don't need it again, but if we do, we know we have it. Sergeant Dave Tarantino, which I'll be bringing to a future meeting, was off duty in the Village of Elmont. Out of the van, a woman was choking while eating. He performed, the woman was actually passing out, turning color, it was that serious. He gave her the harmic maneuver, was able to dislodge item, basically saved the life. So we had another, we had a pretty busy month.
And as the Chief said, we will be recognizing these individuals at a future meeting.
Yeah, I'd like to bring it to, a good month of life saves. We had a few arrests, I just want to alert you too, and I know your Board has been great and I send emails and texts. You guys have responded. What we had, one of them was in Bonham. We had on Bonham West, there was a vehicle, early morning of July 5th, it was 4th of July night. Woman went into Bonham, smashed, drove into several vehicles, left the scene and fled the area. DWI, we were able to ascertain her in charge with DWI. Local woman hit numerous cars. Residents were very happy we were able to get her. Obviously for insurance reasons, get their vehicles fixed. We also had in the last, last week, with a gentleman who really was in the Village about a month, we found out, did an investigation. Was staying in an apartment illegally. Notified Building Department, notified a landlord. He went out there and we charged him with a burglary, an attempt at burglary, with several other counts of peeking in people's windows at 2:00 in the morning, stalking a woman, and he fled about 2:40 AM on July 4th night. My officers able apprehended him at 2:40 AM. Got him, charged him with multiple crimes, put a good bail on him and hopefully going to add multiple charges while in the future. Another instance, he has 14 prior arrests, two active warrants in New York City and of Albany. So I just want to let you know, they did a great job. We just, it took us a week or two to find where he was. We've never dealt him before. But we did get him and we apprehended him and I think the residents, we spoke to every resident that had an incident. We personally spoke to them and explained we had him and they were very, very appreciative to all of us in the Village Board for support of getting himself. So I want to let you know that, I thought that was a great arrest they did. Community events, we had a dare pool party, thank you Kathy. And Family Day, we always support and we look forward to being around the rest of the summer, helping out the concerts and anything else you need, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, Department of Public Works, Charles Sawicki.
Good evening, Mayor and the Board. I'd like to give a consent, wastewater treatment plant consent order update. The Village has been successful in deferring the start dates of sanitary sewer abatement Phase 1 and 2 D E C consent order projects for a period of one year. In return, the D E C is requiring the Village to complete the manhole repair and rehabilitation for Phase 1. Manhole inspections, smoke tests, dye water testing for Phase 2, and the construction of a bio retention base in that Village Hall. The initial plan was to utilize DPW workforce to complete this work, saving significant capital funds. With the current manpower, this will not be achievable. At this, as a point of reference, in the 2004 physical budget, the DPW had 35 employees, one wastewater treatment plant chief operator consultant and summer help. In 2005, physical budget, the DPW had 37 employees, one wastewater treatment plant chief operator consultant and summer help. The 2016 physical budget has 28 employees. One labor position was eliminated from the Street Department. Currently, there is one vacant position with a second position becoming vacant at the end of this month. These positions are M E O 1 and M E O 2 positions respectfully. Moving forward, the DPW will be requesting to fill these positions with much less expensive labor grade 7 employees with a savings in excess of $43,000 per year. So I'd like to request the Mayor to appoint Mr. Nello Valicino to vacant labor position working in the Refuge Department, effective July 20th, 2015, at a rate of pay of $16.86 per hour.
Okay, do I have a motion to confirm?
And Mike, Mike Giannino, I'm sorry. This position is budgeted for the labor, I can ask you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it is, and it's, yeah, it's, just to clarify, we had an M E O 1, an employee M E O 1 position that submitted his resignation last month. So his salary was much higher than the labor's position that we plan on filling. His rate, I don't know offhand, but it was probably in the excess of 20, 25% higher than this position that we plan on filling.
And the vacancy is in existence now. He notified you a month ago, but that employee has finished his employment?
Yes, he completed it, lasted about four or five weeks ago.
I have a question, Charles. You made a statement that it's much cheaper to do it with DPW workers, the repairs that you itemized there. What's the cost? In other words, what did the private contractor give us as a price and what does it cost us with our DPW to do it? I mean, anybody can say it's cheaper to do it this way, cheaper to do it that way. What are the numbers?
Well, the one thing that, well, in terms of the, in terms of the sanitary sewer abatement work, whatever the cost would be, whether it was cheaper or less expensive to go outside, we would need to have capital funds to be able to accommodate that work. And by doing it in-house, we do not spend that capital funds, those capital funds.
Well, that's a fact, but that's not what you said. What you said, it was cheaper to do it with DPW workers than with an outside contractor. And I'm asking you, what is the cost? Obviously you researched this and you have numbers, don't you?
Well, the, what I, the intent of my statement was that it would not cost the Village any additional funds, because we already have the manpower budgeted. We do not have the capital funds budgeted.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
The motion is for?
The motion is to hire, hire?
Nello.
Valencino?
Valencino? I'm sorry. I need you to say his last name. Vatchichino? Vatchichino?
Right, so this is, Matt has made a motion to confirm. Do I have a second?
I'll make a second.
Okay. Mr. Morris?
No.
Mr. Hagan?
Yeah.
Mr. Markounis?
No.
Mr. Byrne?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion is carried.
Okay. Okay. I do have one other item that we'd, Mr. Don Toscano is our chief operator at the wastewater treatment plant. There is some new law in place that will require him to take on some additional training, and this is the New York Alert Notify training course. Unfortunately, Don was not able to get into the July 16th course that was scheduled. I would like to get approval from the Board for him to attend the class or the coursework. It's a one-day course. It's no cost to the Village. It's a one-day course. It's no cost to the village. And we're not sure what the date is. These things sometimes fill in very quickly, as we found out this time. So we'd like to be able to, once it becomes available, to be able to have Don attend that course.
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I don't need a roll call because there's no money. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Okay, thank you.
You have snow and ice agreements? Snow and ice agreements?
Yeah, I'm trying not to, I'm trying not to, to think about snow and ice. I apologize. Okay. The, as, as everyone on the board knows, we have an agreement with the New York State DOT to plow their roads and to deal with the snow and ice, and it's a snow and ice agreement. Because of the severe winters we had the last two previous years, they have increased the dollar amount that they are going to pay the village. And as a result, we will need to pass a resolution to adopt those new dollar amounts.
Have the mayor sign it.
And for 2013, 2014, the dollar amount is increased from $17,305.38 to $18,551.98.
Okay, I need a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement?
Motion to amend the agreement and the mayor to sign.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Markounis?
Yes.
Mr. Byrne?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion is carried.
All right, so the same holds true to the 2014, 2015 agreement. The dollar amount, initial dollar amount was $17,305.38. The new dollar amount is $19,105.14.
Motion to approve the amendment of the agreement and for the mayor to execute the agreement.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Markounis?
Yes.
Mr. Byrne?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion is carried.
Okay, and the last request here would be a resolution to adopt the 2015, 2016 municipal snow and ice agreement.
And that is the amount that you mentioned in the workshop?
The dollar amount that I have, and Virginia could confirm that, is $17,052.47.
Yeah, that's what I had. Motion to approve and for the mayor to execute the agreement.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Markounis?
Yes.
Mr. Byrne?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion is carried. Thank you. I do so apologize. Virginia just alerted me. I have missed audience participation. Skipped right over it. I had so many notes on my sheet here. So if you would like to speak, please come up to the microphone. Please state your name and your address for the record and address the village board. Thank you.
My name is James Lyons. I live at 29 Temple Lane. I'm just wondering what the status is for the emergency railroad track crossing. From what I understand, the funds have been appropriated. New Jersey Transit gave the okay. So when is this going to get done?
I will tell you that we are moving forward. Unfortunately, there has been some residents who have been upset with the location of the emergency railroad crossing. The reason that New Jersey Transit agreed to this at all, because they don't generally do these things, is because of the good working relationship that the chief has established with them, and they have agreed to this location. If it's not at this location, I don't believe the New Jersey Transit is going to go ahead with it. But, yeah, they won't. The chief is saying that they won't. So I don't, I, I did meet with the residents, excuse me, that would have been affected by their emergency crossing. I did explain to them that although it's a crossing, it would be for emergency vehicles only. It would not be a daily in-and-out traffic. It's just to keep the west ward residents safe and to allow emergency vehicles to service the west ward in emergencies where both entrances to the west ward are affected. We are right now, Terry is working on the, the agreement with New Jersey Transit. So we are trying to move forward, but we have had a lot of pushback. Maybe Trusty Hagan can talk about the pushback, since he has brought it to the board's attention, that the residents over there, because he happens to live on the street, that the access would come through. He could elaborate on that.
So it's the people who live on the street where the access is?
On Dunore Court, correct.
The people who would need it. They don't want it.
I think Mr. Hagan, Trusty Hagan's been dealing with them, so I think he could probably elaborate better on that.
Mr. Lyons, I wouldn't say that. What I would say is, if this comes up for a vote, I will not vote, because I live there. Anything further you want to know about the Dunore Court crossing? You should come into Village Hall, and they'll show you a whole folder, rather than me elaborate. Would you mind doing that?
No, I wouldn't.
Virginia has a whole folder in there.
Okay.
She'll gladly show you what she has. Okay, I just think it's something that's necessary, and I don't know why it would be held up, so. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Jim Genatino, Two Memorial. Why wouldn't we have a public hearing on that?
On what? The emergency crossing?
On the location.
Because?
I mean, I think overwhelmingly, you would get support.
Okay, but I think there is no other location, Jim, so if we don't do it at this location, it's not going to happen, and I think human life is much more important.
I agree with it. I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just saying, I think if you had a public hearing, you would have public support for this project in its present location.
Right, and the second portion of it is, Jim, is that we don't own that land?
I'm sorry.
We don't own that land yet.
No, I understand.
So we haven't acquired it yet, so we can't do a public hearing on land that we haven't acquired.
I think the road would be a lot easier if you could do it the other way around, but if you can't, you can't.
No.
Another, another question. I received an email about putting in for grant money, $150,000, for temporary barriers at Lonigan Drive to suppress the water. Now, I know the county has allocated $150,000. According to the information I received, Senator Calucci and Ellen Jaffe needed the signature of the entire board to go forward with this project. And I understand that you did not want to sign that. I mean, it was no cost to us. What did we have to lose when everything to gain?
Okay, first of all, Mr. Genatino, you are definitely misinformed. I have set up a meeting with Assemblywoman Jaffe and Senator Calucci. I did not refuse to sign that. I think that was someone who was probably politicizing this whole, and it's really just sad to think. I have set up a meeting with them because this village has not had a demonstration on these barriers, nor have we been given any information with regard to the cost of these barriers. We have not been given the viability of these barriers. We have not been, we have not had anyone contact our fire department, our DPW. We don't have any information to do a narrative or a project narrative for these. We don't know who would be putting them up, where they would be stored. We have absolutely no information. So to ask prematurely for capital funds before you have all this information before the board is ridiculous. So I did not say I would not sign this. What I said, it was premature, and that I would like to meet with the senator, I would like to meet with the assemblywoman, and I would like to get all the information, the viability of being able to use these, what liability would be on to the village if the village did put these out? The attorney has not been spoken to. No one has come forward to the board as a whole to give a demonstration of these and to lay out a plan of how they will be used. And that is the reason I did not, at that time, sign a letter. I can tell you that Ellen Jaffe has secured another $250,000 in capital funds, which she is looking to use in Saffron for flood remediation. So that is something that we are going to discuss on Friday when we meet, and we will also try to get all of this information in place before we ask for capital funds of something that we don't have any information about. That is why it wasn't signed at that time. I never refused to sign it. I just simply asked for it to be held on to until we had more information.
Are you finished?
I am.
Good. You were at the same demonstration I was at Cackeyak Park when you saw that system work on the Marwar River.
That's correct, Jim, but that is on the.
Well, you just said you never saw it in operation.
Excuse me, Jim?
I love to talk.
Okay, but you're.
Were you not at that demonstration?
I was at a demonstration of them being used in a river.
Everyone was there.
In a river, Jim. That was in a river. And there is nothing in that letter that says those are the same barriers that we're requesting funds for. Nowhere in that letter did it explain to the assemblywoman or to the senator where they were coming from, what the manufacturer was, that they were the same ones. The deputy mayor of this village went ahead and sent out a letter on behalf of this board, and I am the only one who saw that demonstration. So that is not fair to the rest of these board members as well.
They weren't in office, some of them, so they couldn't have.
But it should have been done before any, any, any funding was asked for it. They don't even know what they're asking funds for.
They're asking for flood barriers.
It was a simple request for capital funding.
Excuse me, the way you work out details here in the future, that you don't know what's going to happen.
Okay.
You could have asked the state to provide the money contingent on approval of the barriers.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Genatino.
This was a request for flood barriers to protect our citizens down in the Memorial Drive area and in Esq. Gate area. It was a simple request. That's what we were seeking. We were seeking to help, we were putting a tool in the fireman's toolbox there to help prevent flooding, flooding or mitigate flooding, and to possibly prevent oil spills or any other uses that we can use these barriers for. It was another tool for our emergency services, just like Ed Day authorized the purchase of $150,000 worth of these barriers for the county to be stored in Pomona, to be used by emergency service personnel. That's what I was seeking. That's what the board agreed to. That's what the rest of the board signed the informational letter on, and the mayor, you did not sign the letter.
I did not refuse, Ed.
Right. No, I said you did not sign the letter.
Did I refuse, Ed?
You did not sign the letter.
At that time. Thank you.
Joe Corrigan, 46 Park Avenue. I was at the demonstration. Did you gentlemen seek out the company that's going to be working on this stuff?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a video of it. I have the written advertisements of the product.
And where is this company from?
I spoke to Roy Tishudi. He was at the demonstration and thought very highly of it. I think Richie Korf was there too. I'm not sure who else.
I'm sorry. I'm having a hard time hearing you.
I'm sorry. Yes, I have the pamphlets home saying what this barrier does and how it works. There's a video attached to it that you can go on and watch it function in flood stages. When the original demonstration was done, I wasn't on the board at that time, so I wasn't invited to watch it.
Oh, well, actually, it was done for the whole entire village. It wasn't just for the board.
I understand that, but I didn't get an invitation. Subsequently, the barriers appear to function as they're designed to function.
In a river, and did anyone speak with?
What is Esq. Gate, the Atlantic Ocean?
Yes, but these are actually going to be wrapped around the homes or wrapped around their sheds. This isn't going to be used for stopping the river flowing, because if you do, then you need to have the drainage agency make sure that they approve it. Did anybody go to the drainage agency to see if that would be acceptable to them? Because they were not in favor of this then. My other question is, what happens with the $150,000? Or is it secure that every home is going to be getting one?
No one said any home was getting one.
So what is?
This was another tool in a toolbox for emergency services to come in, just like pumps. They have pumps on the fire trucks. They have hoses on the fire trucks. There's all different types of tools that emergency service uses, okay? So now, what they use, I, what I would imagine that if there was a situation where they needed to divert water in an emergency situation, that they would be able to deploy these portable flood barriers and divert water, possibly from homes, possibly from village infrastructure, possibly from the downtown area.
But you're changing the flow of the river and without.
I didn't say I'm changing the flow of the river. I said I'm diverting the water from flooding other areas, critical infrastructure.
So house number one doesn't have it, because it's only $150,000. House number two does have it. House number three doesn't. As we know how water flows, if you're securing one area, it diverts to the other areas. What happens to those other two homes?
Well, we need to work through this. We need to know how many, how many homes are going to divert, how much water is going to be diverted. It's all different scenarios. It's not just one scenario based on one home or five homes.
I understand that completely.
It's a scenario. It's a different, it can be implied or.
Deploy differently throughout the village.
Okay, so back to the question of the $150,000. How do we know as a village that we're going to be getting that $150,000? For those being stored at, where did you say they were going to be stored at? Pomona? At the emergency management?
This is for the county. There's two separate issues here. One's for the county, one's for the village.
So where does the village fall on the county list of getting those? Because I'm sure Stony.
We were applying our, for our own funding to get our own, to receive our own for the village of Saffron.
Hold on, Mr. Markounis?
Yes.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, so during that demonstration that Mr. Morris watched, as you saw, it was generally done through floodplains. And as you know, Esq. Gate is not an open floodplain. So therefore, these barriers have not been 100% proven or tested to wrap homes. Yes, they did do it in New York City, and it worked very well. They had very large streets to be able to mandate that, that water from moving away.
I'm not aware, go ahead, go ahead.
No, what were you going to say?
No, no, go ahead. Sorry to interrupt.
That's fine.
That's all right.
So if these do not work as they are designed, who's, who's responsible for those? Who's responsible for the damage on house one and house three when house two now has no water in it and those two houses have water?
Well, based upon what I believe would be that, and the way you implement and use any device, there'd be training involved. So I would imagine that the fire department would be trained to utilize and deploy these, this equipment. If the equipment was deemed ineffective, they want to deploy it, just like they have a responsibility to, to deploy any other type of equipment.
So you spoke with the chiefs and the police chief to ensure that?
No.
Oh.
No, I did not.
Oh. Because they would be the first, aren't they first responders?
They are first responders, yes. Yes.
All right. So, okay, I guess my questions have been answered.
Yeah, I do have a question. You were there, I think, for the first testing of these barriers? Were you on the board when these first barriers were brought up?
Yes, I was.
And what was your opinion of them?
My opinion was, I thought they were very interesting. I do not know that they are proven for the area that we're trying to flood mitigate.
But you don't know they're disproven either?
No.
In other words, you have basically no working knowledge whether or not they will or will not function?
Neither do you.
You have no knowledge of that?
No, do you? Do you? From what they showed us, it was not proven for homes.
What I'm simply saying is, it appears they work. They have worked in other locations.
And floodplains, correct.
They have worked in other locations in floodplains. The cost to the village was nothing. You're talking about liability. You know as well as I do that.
But there's no forward thinking.
You know as well as I do, we would have no liability if these things were over, overran with water. We would have no liability, and you know that as well as I do. There's an attorney sitting here. They can explain.
I haven't been consulted about this, so I can't give any type of.
And, and yet, you still, if every single house was wrapped, I would think that this would work, without a doubt, from what I've seen on a video.
You're right, and then we need your help to secure a million dollars to do it.
I'm sorry?
Then we need your help. If you think that these barriers will help if we put them by every house.
What is the cost of each barrier?
Then we would need the money to do it.
What is the cost of each barrier?
I don't, it depends on the size of the barrier.
Okay.
Eight-inch barriers, there's twelve-inch barriers, there's eighteen-inch barriers.
And what was our last flood at?
Which ones were you looking at?
Well, which floods are, what barriers are you looking at?
Joe, you were there. You tell me what barrier worked effectively, and then we'll look at the price.
What was our last flood at? What would you suggest?
I'm sorry, I can't. I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
What was our last flood at? What would you suggest? You saw the video.
I'm not an engineer. You were there and actively involved, weren't you?
And you watched the video.
I'm asking you if you were actively involved. You were. Did a 12-inch barrier work, an 18-inch barrier?
If you're going to wrap every house, I would say I would do easily an eight-foot barrier. If you're going to do every house-
I think this is just, you know, this back and forth, this bantering is not productive for anyone here in the audience. Thank you. I don't think-
Mr. Morris, you know, you have made a lot of statements about palm cards and the election. The one thing I will not tolerate in this meeting is anything to do with the elections. If a resident who lives in this village and is a taxpayer comes to this board, you owe that taxpayer the respect of answering their questions and not to point the finger at them about a political gain or misfortune in their campaign. If they choose to run for trustee in this village, it's their right. For you to bring it into this boardroom is wrong, and I will not discuss it with you any further.
You're, you're right.
So to make a comment like that is disrespectful to the taxpayers that put you in that seat.
You are absolutely wrong.
Thank you. Moving along.
No, listen, I'm-
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Oh, I'm sorry, Joe, Terry would like to-
I was leaning back and apparently-
Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Board Member.
Excuse me one minute.
Excuse me for a second, Joe. No, the question was raised about liability issues, and this whole proposal has not been submitted to me. No one's spoken to me about it, so I can't give any type of opinion on liability. I'd be happy to take a look at it if anybody wants to provide it to me.
Okay. I was there-
Your name and address?
My name's Joseph Hunt. I have a variety of addresses. 72 Bonner, 88 Washington Avenue, Enderidge Road. I'm the supervisor of DPW.
Thank you.
I was there through the whole function of setting up these barriers across the river. They never did close a house. And when you look at the area that you have to put these barriers in, the grade drops. So you can never get a levelness. You'd have to have multiple barriers. Barriers do come 25, 50-foot in length, from two inches to five to 10 feet. All right, the flow of water, if you look at some of the videos that Mr. Trudy gave you, and God bless him for being an advocate for flood mitigation, very good man, they do show you regular, straight-flowing rivers with naturally level banks, nothing rough. Reason I came up here to say is you need to go to the drainage agency and look at their reports that they've done, I think, '08, Charles, '12, on flood mitigation in Esquire's Gate. And the Army Corps of Engineers will tell you the same thing. There's nothing they can do with the barrier or without. They came up with a thing way back when, putting a wall from Tilton, Lake Antrim, all the way to Hillburn, 15-foot high, and then they balled out on it because they weren't sure that it was going to hold up under the pressure of water. So anything you do, whether it be temporary, it needs, every agency needs to be looked into. Now, the biggest thing, DEP and DEC needs to be notified if we put anything out or up to prevent, because we could take the water and push it across the river and make erosion, so we can create a problem. So, you know, once we start looking at things, and I know you guys like to dig deep, dig a little deeper, because we really need to do something for them people down there, for one. But at the same time, we got to help our environment to stay stable. So just going out and trying to get something for the village, it's a positive. We can use it in other avenues if we can figure that thing's going to work. But again, please research it. A waste of time, in my eyes, if we don't all put every entity together and get their opinions too. All right, and then again, you get mine whenever you want it.
Thank you, Joe. And I should probably just add, we, matter of fact, the board will get it in their mailboxes tomorrow. We are working on the B lot. We have asked for some capital funding for some green infrastructure down there to try to take on some of this water. And we also will be using some money from Tree City USA. We have a quota of trees to be planted every year. We are looking to plant some trees in Howlett Park also. These seem like small steps, but, you know, a lot of small steps can help in a big way. So we have not given up. Charles and I have been working all week on these two flood remediation ideas. Charles has researched fully the viability of both of these projects, and it really will help, not in the grand scheme, obviously, but it's, we're trying to do what we can with the resources that we have. I should also mention that I met with the drainage agency, and Mr. Markounis sat in on the meeting to talk about, we've had some trees come down into the river. The drainage agency has been wonderful in responding to that. They've come and taken them away. We've had a long battle of being able to go actually into the river with power tools and so on and so forth to try to clear some of the debris out of the river. I'm happy to report that we are working through that. Vince Altieri will be bringing his men over to take a look at the river and to look at the debris that's in the river, as well as some potential trees that look like they are ready to come down, so we can keep the flow of this river moving as this, you know, September, October will bring the rainy season, excuse me, and a lot of water. So we're really trying to get ahead of that. They have not met yet. As soon as they do, I will update everyone on the progress with getting into the river and trying to clear some of that. Our fire department, I've met with the chief, and he's gone out there once already with our men. He's certainly willing to go out there again to clear this area. Now, I must tell you that in our meeting, Vince Altieri had let us know that some of the residents' properties come into the river. So like maybe halfway through the river may be the property owner's responsibility. And also, the banks of the river, on the other side of the river, belong to the residents. Instead of a he said, she said, who belongs, I didn't do it, I feel the best way to remedy this is get it cleaned up, get this river moving, not have any more devastation down there, and then going forward from there, alerting the residents that we've cleaned it up, but it's your responsibility to take care of it going forward. So we'll see what happens. We'll see what the board's decision is on it. But that's where the update is right now for that project.
Okay, Paul Gerard to Cross Street. Just a final point on this with the barriers. I mean, I think, Mr. Morris, it's great that you're concerned about the liability of the village in that example that the young lady offered, but in that example, Resident one and Resident three is screwed. So let's make sure that we're concerned about whether or not the barrier works. I want to talk about or ask about, you know, revenue. Obviously, the village needs a lot more revenue from other sources other than us residents. Where are we on the City of Sufferin project proposal?
Okay, so the draft for the City of Sufferin has been completed. Terry and I have been working on it. It is not quite ready for distribution as we are just making sure that the tax map ID numbers are correct. There's a lot of them, degrees and rustily lines and so on and so forth. So before we present it as a rough draft, we want to make sure that all these distances and degrees are all correct. So that's the only portion of it that we haven't completed. But we have completed all of the other general provisions, election of officers, all of the different agencies that we will still work with, and all of the responsibilities that we would have on our own as a city. So I anticipate that next month I will be distributing it to the trustees so that they may go over it and become familiar with it. And the following month, I will be presenting it to our residents for their, you know, their comment and, you know, to look over it. I expect that we'll have a public hearing at some point to get public input on it. So we're moving along. We're very close now, much closer than we've been in quite a while. And as soon as it's completed, we will give, may even have a public informational meeting on it so that the residents can come, so we can fully explain, you know, what it's all about and video it, so we could put it online, so, you know, and then people could formulate questions and have that public informational meeting. So we're very close.
Okay, yeah, I mean, if, you know, residents have an opportunity to review whatever's proposed and give their feedback, that would be much appreciated. Board's perspective on this? I know I asked him of you last month. I don't know if the additional thoughts on this idea, we want to wait till the proposal comes out?
Well, we have no information on it. We've not been privy to any discussions about it. We've seen no mention of financial costs, agency status, nothing. We're sitting here, we know as much about it as you do right now.
Just to elaborate, I've done all the investigating on my own as far as what you would need, and I've asked Terry to weigh in on the different laws that apply to doing this. It's just, there's been no meetings. It's just been my own desire for this village to stop paying for duplication of services. And, you know, we've talked about it at so many meetings, but none of the members have come to me to sit down and say, hey, I'd like to get involved. Hey, what's going on? Can you give me some information? So I've actually been doing this, you know, just because I feel it's something that Sufferin could benefit from, just as you would with flood barriers. You think they would benefit, so same kind of scenario.
I'm sorry, May, but I have to interject here, and Paul, if you don't mind. This has been going on for a few months now in regards to the City of Sufferin. I believe as the mayor, the mayor should be transparent and share all of this information with the board and with everybody else, with whatever goes on in this village, instead of keeping it to herself. She, according to the mayor, she's continuing to do it on her own. You're not going to get any help if you don't ask. We don't know what you're doing. If we don't know what you're doing, how can we ask you? What are you doing? We need the information on the City of Sufferin. I'm asking you now, please provide me the rough draft copy of what you have, and maybe the rest of the board would be interested in looking at it too and reviewing it. And we'll be able to familiarize ourselves with it.
That's what I'm doing.
Great, thanks.
I just stated that.
Thank you.
I've long been a proponent of what was discussed probably 20, 25 years ago, which was the town of West Ramapo. And we talked about separating Sufferin, Hillburn, Sloughsburg, and the adjoining areas into one town to separate ourselves from the town of Ramapo. And I was, long thought that was worth exploring. Unfortunately, the legalities behind doing that require, as I understand it, not just the approval of the Village of Sufferin, Hillburn, Sloughsburg, the other municipalities, but also the town of Ramapo. And that was, that wasn't going to go anywhere because of that obstacle. So I would say that the concept of the City of Sufferin, while it, and I actually, quite a long time ago, might have been six, eight months ago, maybe even longer, it's been a long year, raised some concerns in this discussion I had with the mayor, mostly about the obligations of the village with regard to social service benefits. Many cities in New York have a burden of their own social services. We wouldn't want to take that on ourselves. And as I understood, at least briefly in our conversation, that was something that could be worked around in a way that it did not create an extra obligation on the part of the village. So that was one of the concerns I raised originally.
Let me apologize, because you're right. Matt did come to me, and he did have a conversation with me about this, and did raise his concerns, and we did talk about them. I apologize, I totally forgot about that meeting. So yes, trustee Byrne did come to me with some concerns that he had, and I told him what I had learned through investigation and from Terry on that issue.
And like anything else, the devil's in the details. I look forward to seeing the details, and I'm sure the rest of the board does too. And I think we should all, you know, be open to the conversation. I think we need to be creative in finding ways that, I don't know if it's a magic bullet in terms of our finances or not, and I'd be curious to see that. And I hope there's been input, I'm sure there has been, from our treasurer as well in terms of some analysis of the money, because that's important. But I think we should all be open to a discussion at the very least. And I look forward to seeing whatever's proposed.
Okay, so, Mr. Markounis, I'm glad you're showing some interest in looking at it. I know last month you seemed like you had already made up your mind that we needed to get, I believe you said you needed to get our house in order before we consider that. But I'd hope you guys want to review it and poke some holes in it, and let's figure out if it's the right thing to do. But again, you and Mr. Morris, you ran on the issues of financial instability here. As I said before, this is a big opportunity, the biggest opportunity any of us can see right now in terms of getting some more revenue outside of, you know, jamming the rest of us with a bigger tax bill.
We've got some-
Just to elaborate a little bit to that point, Mr. Gerard.
Sure.
That going to get your house in financial order and now financial stability, going back, you know, now we're looking at long-term deficit financing. We're looking at capital project financing. We're looking at tax cert financing. We're looking at consent orders. We're looking at service award programs that have not been funded. So once we start getting our house in order, and that was my statement, you're correct, last month, was that there's a lot out here in the Village of Sufferin that needs to be put in order. And of course, if there's a plan out there, I want to be privy or made aware of the plan, be it a plan in finance deficit financing, a plan in the City of Sufferin, a plan in the Town of Sufferin. But I really believe that we need to continue to work to get Sufferin in order.
Absolutely. No, I'm not disagreeing with that. I just, again, a million and a half dollars, they were already paying. We're getting very little in return. We can move it over here, and where are we going to get an amount of money like that some other way? Okay. Another source of revenue that's coming under question over the next couple of years, Novartis property? Anything progressing? Because that's obviously a big risk out in our future with Novartis leaving.
The mayor might have more information on that in regards to Novartis, Mayor?
Yeah, I did have a request from someone who was very interested in the property, who had more than adequate funding for the property and for the use, which was, I can tell you, is commercial. Unfortunately, Novartis has asked for no one to actually talk about the terms or talk about any of the information on it just as of yet. And also, the person who came to speak with me asked that it not be, that our meeting was kept confidential. So I will definitely keep that portion of it as I promised. But I can tell you that publicly, that there, I've been notified that there, through the grapevine, because I've asked, I've made phone calls, not just because I was notified through email or anything, that there has been four bids put in onto the property, and they all are of commercial or mixed-use nature. So it was very good news. And I continue to keep, you know, keep tabs on it. I call every other week just to kind of find out where we are on the, you know, on the progress of it. But at my last phone call, I was pleasantly informed that there's definitely commercial interest. So I'm keeping high hopes and I'm keeping very positive that this will come to a good end. They will not be completely out of the property until 2016, which was good news for us. The water and sewer will decline over the end of 2015. So, but for right now, we're in a kind of little bit of a stable situation with the hopes of very good news shortly.
Okay. When I look at some of the budget numbers, I mean, we've got some, we've got some substantial growth. As far as I remember, our safety costs went up about $300,000, and our benefits went up over almost $600,000. So we're talking about, you know, the way we're generating revenue right now, we can't absorb that kind of growth. We've got to, you know, we've got to do something, you know, I don't want to say radical, but something out of the box. something out of the box, not something that, simple financing is just, it's a nice word for borrowing. It's, we can't borrow our way out of this. If we've got some services that we can, we've got our own services in a lot of places, and we can become competition for other municipalities around us that provide those services to some of the other local villages. So, need to just think about other ways. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak?
Andrew Zabrowski, 3 Center Street in Suffolk.
Andrew, could you just speak, our microphone is not behaving tonight, if you could speak up just a little bit, that would be great.
Andrew Zabrowski, 3 Center Street in Suffolk. Just on the lighter side, I just want to thank the street department and the DPW, we had a street fair on our block, like a party, and they came by and cleaned the street and paved some of the holes that were there, so they did a very nice job. It was kind of long overdue, and the residents there appreciated it. We had a wonderful time, a lot of people showed up, a lot of kids, it was really nice.
And the weather was good.
It was a beautiful day.
They really enjoyed it. One other issue that is on our street has to deal with some hedges that are kind of really unkept and kind of very high. And I was just curious if the street department, or maybe the code enforcer, ever takes a proactive look at things in the village to say, boy, this doesn't look right. You know, hedges that are as high as the street sign, you know, on a corner lot, you know, could pose a significant injury to a young child that's playing in our street. We have a lot of kids here now. So, when you can't see around the corner, and there is a car that's going very quickly, or a truck, and there's a tot out, a little tot outside, you know, playing on a scooter, it could be a potential catastrophe. So, just, I was just hoping that maybe somebody would take a more proactive in the village look at on corner lots.
Yeah, Andrew, they do write about the village, you know, but obviously, this is a situation where they haven't seen, or they, I'm sure, would have been on it. We have an excellent code enforcement department, they're very proactive. But please, don't wait to report this at a board meeting. Please call Virginia right away if it's a safety issue, we certainly don't want to wait for a board meeting for a safety issue. So, if you could give me the address-
Yeah, we need 1 Center Street.
1 Center, okay, we'll send some-
Somebody take a look at, I think the hedges are actually protruding out to the fire extinguisher.
Mayor, if I may, you know what, I was at that block party, and I did, I actually noticed it myself, Mr. Zabrowski, and it's, if you're coming down Highland Avenue and you make a right onto Center Street, correct me?
Yes.
Is that, it's very hard to see around the corner when you're making that right turn, so if we can note that with the DPW, that would be something-
Did you report it to the code enforcement, Mr. Markounis?
No, I did not.
Okay, we'll take care of it in the morning.
Yeah, I'm just concerned for the children that are on the street, because, you know, you don't want to have a situation where, you know, there's an issue.
We'll get somebody right out in the morning.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for letting us know. You too. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, we will move on. Village clerk, there's a whole bunch of minutes that were supposed to be approved tonight. I have read through them, unfortunately, the trustees have not finished with them, so we cannot vote on them tonight. We were going to try to do a portion of them, but some read backwards, some read forwards. So, we're going to actually hold on to them until the next meeting, but they are all, they are all done through June, and I want to thank Kathy so very, very much for all of your hard work, as the board had asked that you try to get them caught up, and I think you've done a phenomenal job in getting them done. So, thank you so much, Kathy, for all of your hard work.
Great job, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy.
Great job, yes.
Okay, you have Priya, right?
Yeah. We just have a request for tables down on 36 Lafayette Avenue, they want four tables and 16 chairs, and the code enforcer and then have gone out and approved it.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you. Finance department, Mr. Janito.
Good evening, mayor and board. Tonight, we have several resolutions that are covering the approval and the bonding for our capital projects for the 2015-16 budget. As you know, when we adopt a budget, we adopt an operating budget, but the capital projects is really a list that would be approved later on throughout the year. And before you are five resolutions that basically deal with the bonding of those capital projects listed in our 2015-16 budget. There are a couple of projects that are not included because those projects do not need the funding right now, and in fact, may receive alternate funding from either other projects or grants or aid. The bond resolutions were, by the way, prepared by our bond council at our request.
Do I have a motion?
Mike, is that, we talked about this in the workshop?
Yes, sir.
That's for like 500 something thousand dollars?
Yeah, I don't know what the total is altogether, but it's five different bond resolutions that you have in front of you, and I'm not sure, Terry, do we need to adopt these individually?
Yeah, if they're separate resolutions, you do.
I'll move the resolution authorizing 2015-16 capital projects and issuance of debt to finance said project.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I just want a clarification, this is for how much of a bond?
Yeah, we have copies of the bonds.
The total amount is, I believe, slightly under 400-
This is saying 1,347,000.
The capital projects listed in the budget were 1,347,000. 750,000 belongs to a sewer abatement project that is being, probably not going to require funding until next year, so we're not including that in these funding.
So, as we talked about, we're going to deduct 800-
That's what we talked about in the workshop.
820,000 from that 1,347,000.
Correct.
Right, okay, that's fine.
Okay, Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Markounis?
Yes.
Mr. Byrne?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion is carried.
There is another resolution to bond a tax cert shari, what this is, is a challenge, or actually a judgment that was placed against us on a tax challenge that covered not only the current year but prior years, and it was not anticipated in the budget because the judgment didn't come down until after the budget had been adopted. In fact, we didn't have knowledge that it would have been passed at that time. So, this is a bond resolution that authorizes to borrow the money to pay for that tax cert shari.
And this is one property, I think you said?
It is one major property, yes.
Do we know which property that is?
It's Stonegate.
Stonegate, Stonegate?
A series of properties in Stonegate.
Okay. Or several groups in Stonegate, right?
Yes.
Now, do we have any money currently in the budget, or last year's budget for tax certs?
We have that in the current budget, I'll have to look at the amount, it's between 40 and 50,000. That amount of money is really there for the smaller challenges and settlements and judgments that come up throughout the year.
So, we will not be using any of that money that's in that fund? We're just going to bond out this money?
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Motion to authorize the issuance of, the issuance of debt for tax cert shari judgment.
Do I have a second?
Second, yeah.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Markounis?
Yes.
Mr. Byrne?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion is carried.
There is another bond resolution before you, this is for the purchase of 160, I'm sorry, of the VFW building, and-
We can't vote on that in the absence of a secret negative declaration, so that'll have to go over.
Okay, then we're tabling that, I assume.
Does the board wish to move forward on the negative declaration for the VFW property?
Just again, I stated earlier, I'm not participating in the vote.
Do I have a motion to accept the negative declaration on the VFW building?
We discussed this in workshop, no.
No, Mr. Markounis?
Is this a vote?
I'm asking you if you'd like to go forward with it.
No.
Okay, Mr. Hagan, no, well, it doesn't really matter. Okay, so, no, we can't go forward with that, Mike.
All right, and the final item is a movement of 25,000 from the water fund contingency to water fund administrative contractual expenses, $25,000.
Why is that necessary this early into the budget?
This amount of money is actually helping to pay for the grant writer, where we are probably going to get some reimbursement of some or all of the funds back from the, when we file for the various grants. This includes our CDBG funds for the roadwork that's being done down Orange Avenue. Also, the grant writer was very much, as you know, besides the things that recently came up, the facade program, over the last four or five years, has culminated about $500,000 in grants. He participated in the grant for Rising New York Rising of $3 million. What was budgeted in the budget was $25,000, and we normally have a $50,000 amount, so that's what this money is.
This would be like an allocation out of the water fund?
That is correct.
Okay.
And it stays within the water fund.
Okay.
Do I have a motion?
Motion, yeah.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Markounis?
Yes.
Mr. Byrne?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion is carried.
Thank you, that's all we have.
Thank you. Bruce, I saw just come in, right on time.
He's been here for a while.
Were you here?
Been here.
Have you?
He had headphones on, so I don't know if he was listening or not, but-
All night.
Don't touch the microphone, everybody.
Yeah, don't touch the microphone.
Good evening, mayor, good evening, board, my name is Bruce Simon, 31 Utopian Avenue, I'm here on behalf of the tree committee, just to announce that in the coming weeks, we're going to start what's called a tree inventory, meaning we're going to go around, there are going to be volunteers going around the village that are just going to take account and make a general assessment of any trees that are on public property or in the public right of way. We are not walking on anybody's property, we're not going in anybody's backyard, there is no cost to the village, this is all volunteer. Just wanted to let the board know and let anybody watching this, or anybody here, know that if you see some people with vests walking around looking at your trees, we're just counting them, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce, you've been doing such a great job with the tree committee, I want to thank you once again for all of your hard work. This is all volunteers. Bruce volunteers his time, so does everyone that works with him, and it's really been great for our Tree City USA, working with Charles, Charles is also on the committee and volunteers his time on it, so we thank all of you for all that you do for the village in terms of our trees and our foliage and our environment, so thank you.
Well, I'm just the one lucky enough to stand here and talk about it. I have to give as much credit, if not more, to Charles and to Fred, who put in probably more hours than I do. I'm just the good-looking one who gets to talk to you.
Thank you, Bruce. Okay, trustees, do you have anything?
Mayor, I do. I began serving the village in one capacity or another in 1994, and I was very honored to serve as village judge in 1994 until 2010, and I took a little break, and against the better judgment of my doctors and my psychiatrist and my therapist, I ran for trustee in 2013. And I was very honored to be elected two years ago to serve. Many of you have learned through the typical Suffolk grapevine that my plans, my immediate plans for my family is that we are moving out of state, and that was not a decision that was made lightly, as this is where I was born and raised. Suffolk means a lot to me. I have my law practice here in Suffolk, been there for 21 years, it's been part of Suffolk since 1956, so we're no strangers to the village, and I care about our village very much. And I hope that in the last, better than a year and a half that I've sat here, I have always attempted to bring some reason to the conversation, I've always attempted to be reasonable, I've always attempted to do the right thing, people can disagree, and that's wonderful, but my time serving the village is coming to a, is coming to an end, and I thought I would use tonight to make that official announcement, although you might have read about it in people's comments, you might have learned about it from watching videos of board meetings, this is coming really from me. Effective, essentially, within two weeks, I will be stepping down as a trustee in the village of Suffolk, effective July 24th. I do that to spend the next two weeks assisting as best I can in whatever needs to be helped, and whatever I can do and have continued to do, or tried to do for the last, for the last year and a half. So, again, I do this with a heavy heart, I love this village, I've put a lot into it, I've gotten a lot out of it. And I just jotted down, you know, the names of the mayors that I knew, and that we all knew, from Mayorella, that's probably the first, actually, I think I may have met Terry's dad once as a little kid, so, Mayor Rice, I could probably say, Mayorella, Mayor Savarice, Mayor Scar, Mayor Parnas, Mayor Hagerty, Mayor Galinski, Mayor Keegan, Mayor Genatino, all fine people, all fine people. And while we may disagree, and, you know, there have been some heated disagreements up on this board long before I got here, this is nothing new, right? This is nothing new, we've seen it even when the board has been controlled by one party and not the other, it's not about that, sometimes just about people's passions. But it has been an honor to serve in some capacity for the last, you know, since December 2013. I truly wish I could have completed my term, but my obligations to my family, frankly, do come first, and while I have attempted to kind of juggle all that for the last nine, 10 months, it is coming, it is coming to a quick conclusion. So, I want to thank everyone up here, without exception, I truly believe that everyone sitting up here has the best interest of the village at heart, and I don't say that lightly. We have different ways of going about it, we have different approaches, different techniques, we have different tones, but no one's up here for the wrong reason. We're all here because we care about Suffolk, and that's, you know, democracy put us here, and democracy will decide in a few months who stays, who goes, who, it's what it's all about. And Suffolk, I knew when we had March elections, I much preferred the March elections, quite frankly, the March elections were hotly contested every single time, but at the end of the night of election night, everyone kind of showed up in the same place, shook hands, and moved on, even people that called each other names during the election. So, hopefully, that will continue in some respect, and I urge, I urge that to continue. I thank you for allowing me to serve, there's people watching on YouTube, whether it's everyone here in the room tonight, I thank you for allowing me to serve, it really meant a lot to me to be able to do that, and I wish you all the best, and I'm here for two more weeks, I'm here for longer than that, I'm just here in this capacity for the next two weeks, and will be here to help in any way I can during that time. Thank you very much.
Matt, I personally want to thank you, I think I'm the only one on the board that's been with you through several years of your capacity as judge and as trustee, and I have to tell you that you're going to be missed. Suffolk as a whole is going to miss you. I remember your dad very, very well, both in a personal and professional capacity, your dad and my dad, actually, spent many times together, and he was always a true friend and a gentleman, and such an enormously intelligent person, and I know that he's proud of the service that you've given to this village, and I wish you and your family the best of luck. I am sure your children are going to be very happy to have their dad back, maybe the wife not so much, but the kids, yes. But I wish you the best of luck in whatever you choose to do going forward, and, you know, I hope that you'll keep in touch with us, and I'm sure we will follow you on Facebook and see all the success that you will, I'm sure, have in your new home.
Thank you, I'll watch it on YouTube, keep it interesting.
Okay. Sounds good. Okay, moving along, oh, I'm sorry, I think the trustees have anything else, I apologize.
Can I go ahead?
I'm sorry.
Two things I had, I want to thank Kathy Van Sickle for working so hard to get all the minutes put together, and we'll vote on them all next month, but thank you very much, Kathy. And the other one was Vaciano is going to be a-
Laborer.
Laborer, what happens to the department authority? Anybody, does he get replaced?
We'll have to hire somebody to replace him. The chief will have to find someone to replace him.
I'm available, chief.
Frank's looking for a job. Frank's looking for a job.
I'm looking for a job, chief.
Okay. That's good. Bob?
Well, I, I guess what I really want to say is, I, I think a lot of disagreements could be avoided if, when information is given, it's given its full and entirety. We had a resolution on board, a position, uh, and all we got was, uh, you're going to bring it up next anyway, but reappoint, uh, the attorney that represents, uh, the village in traffic court, et cetera. And that's great, but we're asked to approve a resolution that had no dollar figure on it. So, I mean, you'd have to be an idiot to, to say, "Well, yeah, I'll retire," and then find out six weeks later that we gave him $200,000 a year. A simple thing like that, the other resolutions that, again, dollar figures were missing, uh, the budget line.
What dollar?
That money could have been deducted prior to these forms being made out, and they wouldn't have been necessary for the conversation that went on. In other words, we knew a week or so ago that this was probably not going to be needed, probably more. The 750,000, uh, 820,000, I think, wasn't going to be needed in this capital budget. Yet here it is on paper, and we're sitting here arguing about it, a pointless thing because, uh, we didn't need it. And that's just really in the spirit of transparency and openness. You know, if we have the facts to start off with, it makes things a lot easier to go along with. That's it.
Uh, Mr. Morris, I just want to clarify. The document you're looking at, the one that you're referring to with the $750,000, at that time, when the budget was adopted, we fully anticipated having to pay for that. Again, the discussions and the resolution with the DEC, to be able to put that off another year, didn't happen until after the budget was adopted and the document was printed.
Oh, you're absolutely right.
That's the only reason why that was...
But again, it could have been adjusted prior to tonight's meeting, saying, "Listen, because of A, B, and C happening, we don't need the $1,347,000. We only need $800,000." In fact, that's all I'm saying, and it, it would have solved, uh, you know, 25 minutes of conversation over this thing.
That's what the workshop is for.
I understand what the workshop is for, but again...
That's what we work...
A simple adjustment, again, transparency.
Okay. Uh, any other trustees? Okay. Uh, it is with a heavy heart, um, and, um, bittersweet that I put forward... Hold on. Short figures in the middle of my heartfelt speech. Okay, as I was saying, it's a, a bittersweet, um, announcement that Scott Brown, who has been, uh, an employee of this village for a number of years, um, he's, he's been, uh, definitely, um, a fixture in this village for many, many years, um, cares deeply about this village, um, has taken on the enormous task of, uh, being the president of his union, um, is probably one of the hardest-working men that we have in this village, has given his notification that he will be retiring effective July 31st. So it's with, uh, like I said, bittersweet, um, you're going to a beautiful place with beautiful weather and beautiful things and a beautiful motorcycle, and are just going to enjoy what you've worked so hard for, but we will miss you, Scott Brown, so I thank you for all of your dedicated years of service to this village, and, uh, have a heavily-hearted accept your resignation, uh, from your position at the Department of Public Works.
Thank you, Mayor.
The second item I have on the agenda is, I'd like to have a motion for, uh, the mayor to sign an intermunicipal agreement with, uh, the village of Slotsburg. Uh, we have, uh, for a few years now, uh, entered into this agreement to do some of their mechanical work. Um, it's a little extra revenue for the village. Um, it has now expired. Uh, Mayor Wright has once again, um, requested that we renew that agreement, so I would need a motion to, uh, to enter back into that agreement with the village of Slotsburg.
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mayor, I'll abstain, Mayor.
Abstain, right, okay.
My firm represents the village of Slotsburg.
Okay. Thank you. Um, the next item on the agenda is to renew the contract with Robert Yoderowitz as the prosecutor for the village of Suffolk. Do I have a motion?
And that was at a rate of 1,500 per month, I believe.
That's correct.
Is that what we came up with? Is that right?
Yes.
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Markounis?